Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, August 26, 2021, and we're here for a work session. As always, we're going to start with the pledge. Kathryn, can you please take the lead?
Look at the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kathryn. I have a couple of announcements. I'm happy to announce Saturday's historic drag racing event at EPCAL was a monumental success. And I was so joyed to see the amount of families attending, spending quality time together. People on dates, people cheering, children playing with remote cars and eating ice cream. It was outstanding to witness a six-year-old and a seven-year-old racer racing for the first time. Unfortunately, Sunday's event was canceled, and there are rain dates. So you should go online. And just you were there.
I was overly impressed. This was planned and replanned and reevaluated and evaluated again. There was no traffic concerns, no noise concerns. We surrounded the property during the event and kind of monitored things from the outside and then as well as inside. There was plenty of extra room for additional parking, additional spectator area. I think it was, you know, it was executed just so, so well. Everything, everything took care of. Just the whole coordination behind the effort. So I have to, I have to commend our fire marshal's office, our police department, as well as the town attorney had just spent so many hours making sure that this would come to fruition. And that's, that's what we're supposed to be doing in the town is assisting businesses, endeavors to come to this town. I am certain that, you know, I did stop by different delis as well and, and that there was an influx of business, and that's good, and that's what we want. We want people to come to Riverhead and visit our delis, our restaurants, and they'll stay at our hotels. And all that is part of this, this event. And so it's going to continue another seven days.
Seven events, yes?
Yep, seven events, seven more days. And so I'm excited. It was well, well-choreographed, well-executed.
I want to congratulate our IT guy, Chip, for beating our councilman and his director as eighth of a mile. Congratulations to Chip.
And if you don't notice, he's not here today.
So a couple of questions.
He, he, he actually smoked you.
It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, it really was.
So Ken, I have to ask you, did you eat, did you eat a sandwich at every one of those delis?
I, I did. I had breakfast at one, bacon eggs in the morning, and then I did, I had lunch at another one. So yeah, I do.
So I was very happy that the event went so well. It was a lot of fun. And I was going to say, as Frank did, that the highlight was watching Chip. I didn't know he was such a dragster. Chip, our IT guy, was, was very fast. So it was fun, a lot of fun.
Okay. And it was, people were crying at the ceremony, the opening ceremonies.
Other, other organizations worked for, for 18 years to get this to come to Long Island. So, and we made it happen.
I went to the Wine Country Deli and he was, he said, where are these people coming from? They've been here since yesterday. I need more food and all around. And they were encouraging people to visit downtown. And I heard a lot of businesses, not only delis, but hot bars. Home Depot was doing well with people were buying chairs and, and Walmart and, you know, people needed, you know, things to make them comfort, comfortable. And so it was good and it's great for the economy. And so those members who voted on it, I want to thank you. I really appreciate you for doing this. And there's three more weekends and two rain dates. And this is, this is great for, for our town. All right, moving forward to our first discussion item, which is outdoor dining. Matters surrounding change to propose local law to amend outdoor dining. I've been a big proponent of this from the onset and creating the legislation and the permitting. And it allowed our restaurants to open very, very quickly within three days of us instituting the legislation and the building department. We've worked, what was it, Memorial Day weekend? We were on the phone all day a year ago trying to get this open for Memorial Day.
Tom and a clock at night.
It was night and day. And finally, I didn't think he was going to take my calls after a while. I was talking to other towns and, and fire marshals, and, and we got it going and it helped our businesses. Not everyone survived, but it was a really good little push for them. And so we're here. And I would like to pursue with assistance of my, the town board to make this a permanent legislation. I know that not every restaurant will qualify, that there, it was just a temporary, but maybe if they adjust according to code, they can also fall under this. So I'm going to ask our chief planner, Jeff Murphy, and again, thank you for working on this. But I think it expires, the permitting expires on the 30th of this month. And we want the restaurants to be ready and know during the fall that, you know, they can continue with their, their enhanced dining possibilities. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. First, Ms. Supervisor, I sympathize with you about Chip scorching you. You are not the first one casualty.
No, it was.
Oh, it was Ken.
It was me. I'll take it.
Chip and I had the same commute on the way home. And one night on a Friday, you know how tired it is on a Friday after a long week? This black sedan pulls up behind me on Sunrise Highway and flashes his high beams at me, pulls alongside me and rolls down his window, and I'm ready to say hello to him as New Yorkers typically do. It was Chip. He likes to make fun of that, so.
He's got something special hidden under that hood.
Yes, that's true.
I would like to also add Bob Curran, the President of the Chamber, and Kristy Verity. Can you please join us up front? Good morning.
Good morning.
So I thought about all the effort that went into this, and, and it was the last minute round of editing, and I did a Google search. The U.S. Constitution took less time to draft than it did to draft this code amendment. I don't, I never want to see it again.
It's for the businesses. We need them.
Absolutely. And the first thing I want to point out, this is not an outdoor seating or dining law, rather. And this is, this is an outdoor seating law. There's a big difference because you see many places that have, like the pizza place, don't forget it on West Main Street, they have picnic tables outside, all that was pre-approved. That's not what this legislation is targeting. It's for dining on, in our downtown areas. The first thing in terms of the code amendment is to establish who's going to be authorized to actually grant the permit. And this legislation would remove the town board from that duty and responsibility and give it to the fire marshal office. And everybody agrees with that between the fire marshal's office and my office, but with a caveat, they desperately need the secretarial support to implement this, but not only this legislation, but all the rest of their paperwork. They're out in the field studying by 80% of their day. There's a tremendous amount of data input that has to go on as part of that. This is going to add to that. And so they definitely need that clerical support in their office. And then we had Laura Tagg last year. Her position was removed because of the pandemic and COVID, but we really, they desperately need that, that assistance. The second one point is that this is going to be an annual permit. It's not going to be a permanent one-time, all, there's going to have to be annual inspections of, of these facilities. So that's, we put the word annual in there. The third thing is that where are they going to be located? But as you correctly pointed out, this is not going to be allowed everywhere. It's not going to be allowed in strict commercial areas on Route 58. That was done because of the COVID. And they were put into parking lots and other locations that you would not normally allow outdoor dining. So that's going to go away, but it is going to give the downtown areas, namely in the DC1, DC2, DC3 areas, the ability to apply for it, and also in the VC, the Village Center zones. And that would be, for example, in downtown Jamesport. They have sidewalk in front of their facilities where they can have some outdoor dining tables. The next part of this is the, the distance, the dimensional requirements. Right now, the code says 10 feet can be expanded from the edge of the building. That concerns a lot of the, of the sidewalk area. We believe that it can be done safely and successfully within a six-foot period, six-foot dimension outside the building envelope, and then leaving four feet between the, and the edge of the dining experience and the edge of the sidewalk so people can walk around the table safely and not have to walk out into the street. The hours of operation would be allowed from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We do not allow the use of any permit or portable public facilities such as seating or garbage. In the code currently, it prohibits any sort of attachments to the building. We believe that retractable awnings would be acceptable, and that's currently recommended as part of the pattern book. The next part of this is that they would have to use a new application form. Right now, the application form is only a couple pages long. The new application form now is 10 pages long, but it gives very detailed information about who's applying for it. And this is, was taken off of the one that Southampton uses. I was in Southampton when this was prepared, and the outdoor dining or our seating, excuse me, in Southampton has proven to be very successful. This next part of this is the application fee. This is an annual fee. The application fee right now is $25. That does uncover the cost of, of the review and the inspections and the applications or the inspections of facilities. So we're recommending that the annual fee be $150.
Jeff?
Yep.
Outside dining under COVID was free. And I'd like to see you adding a fee now that we're going to make it permanent. But, you know, we only, there was no charge for the.
That is correct.
Under COVID. And this is just taking a different direction and ma, and making it more permanent.
Correct.
I understand.
Jeff, I have a quick question. I was, I was reached out to by two friends of mine who are real good friends. They are farmers and they have a, they have a farm brewery out in Jamesport. And they just got a visit from the fire marshal, and they weren't too disappointed because they understand that the, that the reason for his visit is safety and, and going forward, they will apply for the.
Site plan application.
Yeah, the requisite permit, but they want to, some kind of, they wanted to be ensured that if they go through the process, that at the end of the process is approval, not denial. You know, as, as long as they meet all the requirements, I mean, because, you know, and I tried to, you know, rebook their concerns by saying, this is for safety. If something goes wrong, you know, the town is ultimately responsible for the site. And, but, and I understand that this code is for downtown DC, but does it apply to the Sound Avenue corridor or any of the farm at all?
No, that's covered under, through the site plan review process.
Okay, so that's a totally different situation than this.
That's correct.
Okay.
I know what you're talking about very well.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Are you part of this meeting?
Yeah, definitely is. It's all yours.
My question is, you say 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. Is there a reason why 11:00 p.m. is the cutoff?
That's usually the hour they cut off for the, the restaurants. If it goes on beyond that, that's up to the town board. I, I have no bone, you know, either way about if they're, if they're staying up until midnight, that would be fine also.
I mean, if there's no music, you know, it's just an extension of their dining.
Do we have restaurants after 11:00 opens in downtown? Not serving food.
Not serving food.
Nobody serves food after 11:00.
Jerry and the Mermaid serves until 2:00 on Friday on Fridays. I've been there.
Pass my bed.
Jerry and the Mermaid, I don't think has sidewalk dining. They have outdoor dining.
Right.
But I don't think they have seating on, on the sidewalk per se.
Oh, so this is just for the sidewalk?
Right.
Might not affect anyone?
No, I don't think it will.
Okay.
And I have not put this into MinuteTrack yet, so I have until 4:30 next Tuesday to do so. And then if you've heard any further questions after that, we can come back to the work session next week and answer them as well.
I appreciate the work you put into this, Jeff. It just gives a nice look to a downtown when you drive through and there's outside dining. And it's one thing Riverhead has always lacked, and we're always against it for some reason or another. Unfortunately, it took COVID to make this happen, but it's just a nicer look for your downtown area when you have people sitting outside enjoying a meal, you know, people walking down the sidewalk. It's, it's, it's nice.
Great opportunity for the business owners who have been struggling through these really difficult times to do a little bit more. Yep.
This is, this was a lifeline during COVID for a lot of those restaurants.
It was.
And so we want to make sure they're aware that, you know, we want to do everything we can to assist them.
And I would like to help out with that.
Well, I mean, the, the one thing, this is great. I know how hard you worked on this, and I know how hard the fire marshal worked on this because, you know, working with the bid and, and just the restaurants all around, the hammers. But I also know how hard you worked on this, even during the whole pandemic, and this is one piece of it, getting calls at 11 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night on the weekends and getting this out there. This also allowed us to, just so everybody knows here, to share it through the Alliance of Chambers. As soon as our permit was done, we shared it with the, everybody in the county. So every town had a copy of that to get that out there. That's our responsibility as a chamber. But, you know, I, I was amazed. I mean, you guys did an phenomenal job. There is no way you recoup the losses from this, from the pandemic. Just doesn't, anybody in business knows that. So allowing this to be permanent and to Tim's point about just what it looks like, I think is incredibly significant. And I, you know, I want to just say that to you, Supervisor, because I hear so much criticism that you weren't doing anything. They should have my phone during 2020 if they thought you weren't doing anything.
Oh, nothing.
This was one piece of it, and this was a huge piece of it, but there are several other pieces. Thank you.
Well, well, during COVID, we had to do a lot behind the scenes. And Kristy, I was on the phone and Steve constantly. First thing we did was take the homeless off the streets, 33 of them. The churches closed here. They had no place to live. And if it happened to you or me, you want food, shelter, you call, you break into the stores. Everybody, as a result, everybody's crime rate went this way and hours went this way, which is, which was amazing. And, and working with the whole community, the restaurants, you guys, and just constantly, and keeping our town safe, getting vaccines and communicating and keeping up with the state and, and, and the governor's office on tons of Zooms. And we did it, and, and we got through it. And listen, we just got Moody's bond rating up, increase. Not one town in Suffolk County got an increase. And this is after a pandemic. We're taking buildings down. We're, we're quantifying, you know, we're making also outdoor dining seating, you know, permanent. So we are, we're moving forward and, and it's great. And it's all done as a result of a team.
So I want to jump in about the outdoor dining. Something about the outdoor dining, this was something that came up very early on in the Downtown Committee. People, people talked about this happening in other cities, and everyone liked it and thought it would work well. And actually, early on in the pandemic, I remember bringing it up because Greenport did it first. And I remember saying, I thought COVID was a perfect opportunity for us to try something like this because it had been nixed in the past. So I thought, well, here we are. Here we have an opportunity to try out things. You know, sometimes you can get good things come out of bad things. And I thought this is a perfect opportunity for us to try out this outside dining. And, and I love seeing it. I agree, you know, that it's just really nice for the town. I think people enjoy being outside, and I think it's been good for restaurants and helped, helped get them going. And I certainly know that the restaurants have struggled throughout the pandemic.
Jeff, with other permits, you know, the current permits expiring, I'd, I'd like to see this on MinuteTrack to give our restaurant owners and so forth the peace of mind that this is not going to end and it can continue operating and continue to hold on to that lifeline. So I, I would encourage you to please move forward and hit the MinuteTrack.
I'd just like to say on behalf of the bid, you know, we definitely appreciate the, the long-term, the long-term positioning of the outdoor dining. As everyone knows, the outdoor dining during COVID has been instrumental for these businesses to stay alive. The bid had also dedicated $20,000 to outdoor dining products where we reimburse businesses. So, you know, we are thrilled that they can continue using those items that they purchased. So overall, you know, we're very happy to see this as a long-term program. And I'm happy to, you know, facilitate and be a portal, a portal of support for the businesses and the fire marshal and help with, you know, the application and whatever we can do to, you know, get it going and to alleviate the fire marshal's office a little bit and help.
And we'll do that as well.
And while we're on the theme of outdoor events, I have to say thank you, Kristy, to you and Steve and Liz for pulling off another fantastic Live 125. People like being outside. And if there's one thing, Jefferson, you'll agree that we learned from the survey that we did for the pattern book, events are one of the top things that people in Riverhead love.
We need to get activity on the street. That was the big takeaway.
Yeah, that was a big takeaway, and we're moving forward with that. So thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
And you'll be happy to know, Kathryn, that we've adjusted the 255 code so that events will actually be possible. And I'm sure that will come up soon. I, I know we sent you the changes quite a while ago. You didn't chime in, but at the work session, we went through them because of the importance of economic development and how events affect that. And the race, the racetrack is a great one. I mean, it's the impact.
We're going to put that on very soon, as soon as you're finished, because that's critical and I, we understand. And, and Jeff, can you just, I know you're going to put it in MinuteTrack, just email me a copy? Because when we, when, when Riverhead Township created the outside dining, it was adopted by the state, actually. We put it forward to, to all the town supervisors, and they actually copied it. So I want to send them forward, keep them in the loop.
Okay.
Let them know. And I remember Jay's watching, because I know he says he watches sometimes. When it went online, he says, I love this. Can I copy it? And it's, it's in the internet. Anybody can copy it. So they actually already made it permanent.
Yeah, they plagiarized my application last year.
Yeah, everybody plagiarized our application.
I said West Hampton Beach and a couple of them.
Oh, you got it from Hampton Beach?
Yeah.
Yeah. And at the Suffolk County Supervisors Meeting, it was brought up and it was sent to them, and many towns copied it. And again, I know you guys keep on saying the 10, 11 o'clock calls. I, I needed to do the logistics on it, the legal, and get it out as soon as possible because I was getting calls from restaurants. They were desperate. And thank you for, I promise I won't call unless it's an emergency.
No, trust me. I, I have to say, I mean, when you, and I know Kristy did this as well. I mean, these restaurant owners were so concerned about their employees. Their employees live in the town of Riverhead. And I mean, I, you know, being across from them and their tears are welling, you know, their eyes are welling up. This was a serious, serious situation. So to me, you know, we worked as a chamber and we worked with the bid seven days a week. We were on calls, you know, day and night with the county, you know, all, all kinds of calls. So I appreciated the calls. Had you not called me, I would have been quite, you know, not happy, let's put it that way. You were working, and I don't, I don't think a lot of people appreciate or understand what work, work looks like, you know, when you're actually doing it. So I appreciate that. And I, I have to say, I'm really sorry, but I'm supposed to be in Manorville at 11:00. Can I be excused?
Of course.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And Jeff, really, I mean that. You guys, you guys really came through, and, and anytime anybody had a problem, we'd call your office, say, you say, just tell them to do this, and they're good. And it's always a pleasure to work with you, Kristy.
And the fire marshal who got all the applications approved within two to three days.
That was remarkable.
That was remarkable.
You guys are moving Riverhead forward with, with things, with these kind of decisions. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Have a good day. Yeah, I remember Sidik went out like eight hours at a time and just getting, you know, the approvals and within two to three days. And that, that's unheard of to get that kind of approval done. But we, we did it, and thank you for those who supported.
The last round of revisions was on the Friday night before Memorial Day weekend. In fact, called me at 6:00 p.m. on my way home from here. She says, Jeff, we need to make more edits, and we finished them at 9:00 that night.
So Jefferson, our next step is going to be to move this.
Yep.
Public here, but I guess one of the things I liked about is when you said like it's a 10-page application, but it's relatively simple and we keep everything together. So Supervisor, when we do on the website, can we make it so it's just like one icon that can click and print out all 10 pages? So we make it, and we don't have to go to different departments to collect everything? We'll make it as simple as possible for our restaurant owners?
Yep.
They just one-click print and fill it out and submit?
That's the way it is, yeah. It's great.
Yep, absolutely.
I would just like to add last thing before I forget, that you mentioned not all restaurants survive downtown. But I do want to say that all of the restaurants that participated in the programs that both the town and the bid offered during COVID, they all survived.
Oh, wow, that's great.
These programs and initiatives do work for the ones that pull through and, and put some effort in as well. So it's collaborative, but it's definitely a direction that, you know, it's positive. And I think that everyone is seeing that. And I, we see a lot of people working together, supporting each other. So it's great to see that, and it's great to have the support of the town to continue doing this for the restaurants. Thank you.
So the bid works.
Yes, the bid and the town.
And the chamber.
Working together, yes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and have a good day.
And there's copies, if anybody needs copies.
I just got a notification that the parking district was canceled.
All right, thank you, everyone. Our next discussion relates to code revision and changes to Chapter 213 regarding the use of scooters. I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Routhwell, who I know has been working with Deputy Town Attorney, Attorney Eric Howard, to draft this legislation. Ken?
Well, I think this initially came up, we have a company that's interested in eventually doing a shared program for scooters. But in order to get to that, we need to just address, address our local law to make adoptions to be able to accommodate such a endeavor. And so the Code Revision Committee has talked about it, as well as Councilman Hubbard, and I think, and, so I think once we can address our regular town code, then it would give us the opportunity for the future to consider another share program type for scooters. So that's, that was the goal of this legislation and also to adopt safety. So we have scooters perhaps downtown, but we're certainly not going to have scooters up on Route 58 driving around. And so for safety concerns, we need to put something more in place. So I'll let Deputy Attorney take it over.
Good morning, Eric.
Good morning, everyone. All right, so has everybody reviewed the legislation?
Yes.
I know Councilmen Hubbard and Routhwell probably have the code revision. So I modeled this on what we already had for the bicycles and also reviewed what New York City implemented with what the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law authorized. So in April of 2020, the state legislature passed an amendment to the VTL allowing for the use of electric scooters, formally allowing the use of electric scooters on New York roadways. They reserved implementation of that to local municipalities, and that's what brings us to this point. The, the legislation also allows for municipalities to implement shared electric scooter systems, such as the Bird scooters. And there's a couple other private companies that basically come in, they have a set of scooters, they have the smartphone application that you download, and you purchase, you know, a trip or use of the scooter through that application. This, this legislation generally allows electric scooters to be used on any town roadways, provided the posted speed limit isn't above 30 miles per hour.
30.
But the scooter itself isn't supposed to go more than 15 miles per hour. So areas like Route 58, portions of Sound Avenue, it's not going to be able to drive these electric scooters on there. The shared system would be limited to downtown from, from Court Street up to Railroad Avenue to Roanoke, down along Second Street, and then east to Ostender Avenue, then back west through the downtown parking lot like Dermot Avenue and Hightower Way. The use of the electric scooters would. The use of the electric scooters would be prohibited on Main Street between Court Street and Route 58 on East Main Street where Main Street runs into Route 58.
Eric, I see you have a map. Is it okay if I come down and just take a look at it?
Sure. Yeah, I should make a copy of this.
Oh, I don't mind coming down. It's fine. Great. Thank you.
Devin, can you make a copy?
So the highlighted areas on that map are the areas that the shared scooter system would be able to operate. I read line Main Street and other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Why don't we get a copy? Because I can't see what you're talking about. It'll take her a second. You can continue.
It is so much easier just to see it, yeah. Reading it is a little difficult. I got you.
And can we put it on the website later after the meeting? Great.
It'll be on the website or we've done a better job on it.
Yeah.
It looks fine.
I could have made it look better.
But it encompasses the whole downtown area, north and south, east and west.
Yes, yes.
But just to reiterate, because we have a pedal share program in the town and when people say bringing in our scooter share, these are not going to be permitted up at Epcal. Epcal is our walking and our jogging trails and our bicycle trails, but there will be no, you know, electric motorized vehicles, any of so sort up at Epcal. So just.
Only human power.
Yeah, so just want to let people know that that's being protected. It's way too much congestion. It's greatly used and there are no motor vehicles on it.
Did you guys look into safety concerns from other cities? So some people reached out to me that I know they had had some safety issues with the scooters in other cities.
I didn't speak with anyone specifically about accidents or severity of injuries or anything like that. I, I understand that it's not unforeseeable that something like that might happen. My understanding with the shared scooter systems is that they have liability protection.
I was going to say, I asked that question when they made the presentation and they said that they assume the liability for the, for the units.
Yeah, so my, my understanding on that is that the town would be indemnified for anyone using their shared operating system with respect to individual people operating the electric scooters on roadways. I, I assume that that type of liability would be consistent with operating any other vehicle on the roadway.
They weren't allowed to cross Main Street, but they're not allowed to ride up and down Main Street. So they can cross to go like Huy Bear Way to Second Street or.
Right, right. So you can traverse Main Street, but you can't go up and down Main Street.
And then the little side streets off of Main are all, looks like they were all on the map.
Yes, yes.
Catherine, is it companies or individuals that reach out to you? Like, when you have concerns?
People within the community residents.
Okay, well, we included.
But this doesn't pertain to an agreement. This is really, this is not an agreement in any way with any shared scooter at this point. This is about setting up regulations on scooters, electric scooters in general. Somebody can have a private deal on where they can operate what they can do. But also is be maybe a foundation for potentially have a shared agreement where they would be able to operate.
Right, this just, this just provides the framework for authorizing a shared system.
I understand that. I'm, just my point is, I just think it's always good for us to do a little investigative work too and see, you know, make sure they've been successful other places. I'm assuming we did that.
With, with respect to, with respect to the private use or even the shared system use, there is a requirement that when you operate them, you have a helmet on. There's other safety requirements, like, you know, only one person on, on a scooter. Shouldn't have large packages, you know, somehow destructing your operation of it. And actually, incidentally, I, on my way to work this morning, I saw someone driving an electric scooter down Main Street. So this is, the way I kind of look at it, it's, it's an alternative means of transportation. In New York City, it's my understanding they had food delivery people using these, but they weren't really supposed to be using these. So this sort of opened. Sorry, so this sort of opened up, you know, legalized an additional means of transportation that's relatively low cost and convenient for short trips. So in terms of, you know, if this is going to be more dangerous than someone who's riding a bike, I don't, I can't really say what that, what that comparison's going to look like, but.
Eric, what'd you say was the top speed that they go at?
The top speed would be 15 miles an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just, the way I look at it is it's sort of a pragmatic, pragmatic measure to implement to legalize in additional way that people can move around at a relatively low cost.
Do you guys want one? Give one to Alex and to Tim. All right.
Certainly, we don't want them leaving the breweries on a scooter.
No, under, under the code operation of, thank you, operation of one of these electric scooters while intoxicated would be illegal.
Thank you.
It's letter G and talks about intoxication. H talks about drugs. So I think you did a great job towards covering a lot of those safety issues and concerns implementing in this bill.
Yeah, I tried, I tried to cover all the bases. Obviously, if anyone thinks I missed something, please let me know and I'll get it, I'll get it in there for, if, if we're going to take this to a public hearing, I'll get it in there before then. And if there's any other concerns about the legislation, just let me know. Try to answer your questions. If anything else comes up, if you're contacted by anybody in the community who has specific concerns, they could contact me and sort of take from there.
I also say that proud for this to go forward because we do have people utilizing scooters. We don't have, you know, the proper town code in place to enforce anything. But at least important aspect in this, Eric, you put in here is that it requires helmets. And so for the individual that you saw this morning, hopefully they were in a helmet. But if not, we're going to start, we're going to start letting them know that they got to. So moving this forward.
Yeah, right.
So part of.
I'm not going to say.
Part of, part of this legislation, moving it forward puts in a safety factor, everything. So we are addressing it, so it's, it's better.
Yes.
Adding a safety component to what's already out there and existing.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, thank you. We're going to move this forward?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Eric. If anybody has any questions and they can contact you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
So before you start the next topic, I just wanted to say I'm going to step out for this conversation. I have no interest in any future or any past solar projects personally, but just to stay consistent and to upkeep my good reputation, I'm going to step out. See you in executive session.
See you.
Okay. So you got a little bit of a break. All right, our last discussion item is a matter surrounding possible solar moratorium. It is a topic that I have personally visited and I am happy again to be readdressing this with the board. As you recall, I had previously last year submitted a resolution on a moratorium and I didn't have the support then. And I'm hoping that I'll have the support because things have changed. At the moment, all solar is zones in Calverton and Hamlet has had more than their share. This concern should be addressed through the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure if you agree with me, but we're in the middle of a comprehensive plan and it should be addressed. And I've gotten a lot of feedback from individuals saying, you know, you're disturbing our, the town is disturbing our public look and, you know, enough of solar, enough of solar. And with that in mind, I, I'm going to ask our town attorney, Bob Kaczewicz, to go forward and propose to us this new revised version of the solar moratorium that I am introducing today. Bob, good morning.
Good morning. Bob Kaczewicz, town attorney. I will try to keep my voice up because I know the mask kind of keeps things a little bit hampered. As the soup. You okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Bumbled back here.
Makes it easier. Thank you.
I think we're distance apart and I'm wearing mine.
As pointed out, last year in 2020, the town did put forth a proposed moratorium on the development of commercial solar energy systems. It was noticed, an actual public hearing took place that occurred on September 1st, 2020. There were numerous comments made at that public hearing. There was also numerous letters that followed thereafter. And the proposal that went forward on that day, September 1st, 2020, was set to be adopted on September 15th, 2020, but was not due to the numerous comments and questions that came up as a result of the public hearing. Thereafter, on the 16th of September, I, I did draft revisions to the moratorium to address questions that had been raised at the public hearing. I, I don't know if I got them all. If someone says, well, geez, you didn't take this one into consideration. You want to make some additions to it, please let me know. And on the 16th, I, I do see that by email, I sent a revised copy around to the board. I also then sent copies to, I think, staff on or about 16th of September. As a backdrop, because it's a moratorium, it is a type 2 action under SECA and specifically 617.5C subsection 36. Therefore, it's allowed to proceed forward without the necessity of getting ourselves embroiled in a, in a SECA review. It does require a referral to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. So there would be a need if the board decides to proceed forward to refer it to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. And of course, you would not be able to adopt until such time as we receive comments back on the Suffolk County Planning Commission. One of the things that came up, I think, was, was a question of, you know, what is the catchment or what solar systems are being presumed or envisioned to be part of the moratorium local law? And there was questions raised about rooftop solar. It was my belief that the town board did not want to prevent or stop rooftop solar installations.
Or businesses, or residential, or business, Bob? Can you make sure that that's in the resolution?
Well, I, I did it a little bit differently. And if the board wants to go that path, please let me know. What I tried to do was, was make it clear that we were talking about commercial solar energy production systems, which are defined not only in section 301-3, but also further elaborated in, I think it's Article 52 L22 of the code, so that that would be the solar system that would be applicable to or would be caught by the moratorium. Clearly, some things are going to have to change because as I say, this was done in September of last year. So some of the, well, actually, I, I don't know if it will need to be changed because some of the other projects have moved forward, of course. I also added in, again, a second provision to indicate that, you know, this would not, and actually, I, I put in there, and I can, and I can add commercial rooftop situations, but I added a paragraph at the second page that accordingly buys clear language, a commercial energy solar production system would not include any residential application nor any application made which does not include a power purchase agreement. Meaning that if it's a residential or commercial use where they're just using it for their own purposes, they, they would not be caught to this moratorium. I, obviously, the question I'm sure is going to be raised is, you know, does the, does this prevent a state application proceeding forward? I, I think not because it's a local law. It's dealing with local regulation and as such would involve a moratorium solely on our Article L22. I also put an additional paragraph at the very end on page, I think it's page six or of it, that said, any solar application made under residential or commercial properties meeting the criteria of energy conservation devices as defined in section 211-12F of the Code of Riverhead would also not be caught by this moratorium. The proposal is for a 12-month moratorium. As I had indicated to the board, I believe the moratorium would be able to sustain any challenges legally for two reasons. One, we are in the process of doing a master plan. And two, there has been issues raised with, you know, a need to either put, stop the things, to put the brakes on a little bit and allow us to catch our breath in order to allow this particular use to be analyzed. So again, there's going to be some further updates, including changing the dates on this, the revised resolution from 9/16. And I look forward to your comments and hope that we can get it in queue for hearing soon.
So Bob, we actually just talking about specific 11933, which is Calverton.
Well, well, the, the current article, L22, allows for solar in industrial A, industrial C, which for all intents and purposes is Calverton area. So yes, that's what it turns out to be.
That's all we're doing, yeah.
But, but it, again, it's looking to put a moratorium on implementation under that particular article in the code and the zoning ordinance.
So much solar came into the town at such a rapid rate. I think it kind of caught the town off guard. And now with the comprehensive plan being done, I think this is absolute perfect time to put a moratorium on solar farms so we can step back, look at it and address it properly in the comprehensive plan before we decide to move on and get rid of the moratorium. So I applaud you for doing this. I asked for this in the last administration and there wasn't support for it. And I'm very happy to see this come up now.
And Tim, we don't have anything in the pipeline, which is good.
Right.
Unfortunately, we had to work through the other projects and the timing is like perfect. And like you said, you hit it right on the nose. You know, we are addressing a comprehensive plan and that's the purpose. It's an extensive effort out there to reach out to the public, to get all the environmentalists, to get everybody, the public, the people who live in Calverton. And it, it'll be addressed and whatever they decide, they decide, you know, or the town board adopts. But this is a right step in the right direction. It's the perfect timing and I hope that I have support of the board.
If the comprehensive plan is done within the 12 months, this moratorium could possibly be lifted prior to that. It doesn't have to stand if, if we have our comprehensive plan done and update, we can make the evaluation, does this necessarily stand?
The comprehensive plan, they determine that you don't need this article and then we'll be then amending article 2 to repeal it. The, one thing I do notice and it's something that I guess I got to think about a little bit. We had put in an artificial date, I guess for lack of a better description, that excluded projects that had permits or approvals prior to January 1, 2020. As I know earlier, with the projects that have building permits or been built up or those that have site plan, a special permit would already pretty much be approved. There may not be a need for that artificial date anymore.
Jeff, we don't have anything coming in, right? Or, all right, so that settles that matter. We don't have anything coming in, nothing pending. And again, that makes it the perfect timing. Prior to that, we had to exclude projects when it was first brought up. We had exclude the projects that were already submitted applications and, and now we have nothing and it's the perfect timing and can we go forward with this?
I have some comments on all of this. I've written up some comments that I'd like to make. First of all, Bob, to your point, I would not want this, I would want to ensure that this does not impact rooftop and ground-based utility installation.
I'm not sure what you mean by ground-based, but rooftop, I understand fully.
No, just the, I mean the home, the home ones and the rooftop ones is what I'm talking about.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
Okay.
Let me clarify that. Also, Jefferson, I don't believe I received the staff report on solar too. But we were told, we were told, and I believe you asked for it too, supervisor, did you get it?
No, but what does that have to do with here? This is secondary. If you need some documentation, you can ask them. We are here just to discuss, not somebody getting a document. We are here to discuss the solar moratorium.
We are here to discuss the solar. I did not receive, I thought we were getting that within a day or two, we were told. I thought we said, I thought it was said by the end of the next day. So I never received the staff report. So I never received the staff report on the solar two. As far as the way all of this transpired with the solar moratorium, this is disingenuous at best. First of all, the solar moratorium that was brought forward last year, there was pushback on that because it did not include the two major projects that were before us. It, it excluded those two major projects. So at this point now, we have six hundred and sixty acres of solar before us. So as far as protecting the people of Calverton, I don't see that the people of Calverton were protected. And certainly, I think that it is not coincidental that this moratorium resurfaces after Mr. La Squadro's project goes through. Mr. La Squadro actually presided over your nomination. So I don't think that's coincidental that that, this suddenly resurfaces as a moratorium after that project just went through.
So you-
You know, you're saying that, you know, we are looking at the impacts, you know, we're having a moratorium because we're concerned about the impacts of all of the solar that, you know, does only go into one, one nine three three. And yet, it, it was okay to not weigh in as a town on solar two at the state level. Didn't, the supervisor's office did not weigh into that. And next era got neg decked saying it had no impacts. So I, I find it to be hypocrisy that you don't have impacts, but now you're concerned about the impacts. I think that at this point, I, I think after the moratorium, I, I thought there was a two-month period of some sort where we were supposed to come back to that. The moratorium got tabled because we said we were going to bring in stakeholders and there was going to be a discussion about this and come up with a plan. None of that happened, so that needs to happen now. Certainly, at this point, you know, we already have these two projects coming in, but I think at this point, we, because of, you know, the people in Calverton have a right to weigh in, we need to, we, we should pause, take a look at this and bring people in. You know, have, have a discussion at work session and give the people of Calverton an opportunity to speak up on this topic. And just checking.
So I'm confused, are you against the moratorium then?
No, I said I think we should take the moratorium. But I think it's very disingenuous to say, oh, all of a sudden, we, we care about what the people in Calverton think. The moratorium, you held off the moratorium till your projects got approved. So, I mean, the, the way it went about is disrespectful to the people of Calverton.
I think there's a lot more agricultural available in Calverton and there could-
But at this point, at this point, we- Excuse me?
There's a lot more agricultural land in Calverton now that could be, you know, other projects could be coming down the pike. So I think it's time to, to hold off and to evaluate what impact they'll have on, on the, on the area. That's why we're discussing it.
And I find it, I, I, I think we need to, we need to look at what's happening in Calverton. And certainly, you know, with the, we have the master plan happening, this is a time for them to look at it. But it is certainly not coincidental that this moratorium was suddenly brought out right after Mr. La Squadro's project was approved. Those are my only comments.
Okay, so I, I-
I, I have, I have, I mean, I'm not sure where, where to respond to except to say that I, I note that last year, when, when the question about the next era project had been discussed and without getting into, deeply into attorney-client questions, I, I did bring to the board's attention the potential for problems with excluding that or curtailing that project due to the time it was in the queue and, and certain things that had happened during the processing of it. Without going into too much depth, I, I, I thought that stopping that project for the reasons that I had shared in a memorandum with the board would have been a problem. I looked at the minutes from the meeting, I, I didn't see any discussion about getting the stakeholders together, but it could have been a discussion at a subsequent court session, I, I don't know. I do note that because of the concerns that were raised at the September first, two thousand twenty public hearing, as well as, I think there were something like seven or eight letters that had been filed thereafter, I, I did the revision on September sixteenth, believing that it would be looked at by the board and, and, and maybe I should have been a little bit more vigilant in pushing the board forward at that time. For that, I apologize. But I did send the revised draft with, with my red lines on it. That's part of today's discussion and which I understand has been posted. So I, I, I know that this is obviously not an easy decision. Moratoriums are never easy for any board to make a decision on, but I, I know that I had followed up thereafter to see if the board wanted to do a sort of revised version of saying.
Okay, so I, I just want to comment, I'm very confused. Normally, when you create a moratorium, if there are any projects in the pipeline and they spent a substantial amount of money and they have progressed forward, it is inappropriate for us to say it includes everything that's out there. These companies spend money, you did what you had to do, we directed you in a, in a direction, now we're putting a stop to your application. That falls under Article seventy-eight and we will be sued and they probably will be given the go-ahead. As a legislator, it's my responsibility to know all the legislation. I did put up the resolution, it was not, Councilwoman Kent, you opposed of it because next era was there. I was following my attorney's advice, knowing the Article seventy-eight. And now that the project is finished, we are going forward. I know Councilman Hubbard had stated to me in the past, looking for it, and now we, I have discussed it with at least two other board members and we agreed. It is the time, we're clear, there were no projects. And unfortunately, there's, you know, misunderstanding here, Councilwoman Kent, and I don't think you should be calling any other board member's names. Let's just try to be as professional as we can and work together. And I, should we move forward with this?
No, I am always very professional. And Mr. Kozakovich did not say definitely that it, those projects couldn't be included. We could have looked into that, those projects could have been included and certainly, people need to look at what went down here because I'm not buying what you're saying and other people are not either.
Okay, so we're going to announce the perfect timing, we are going to go forward with this resolution? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Do you want me to make some further changes based upon the, the comments or are you fairly comfortable with the draft?
We can, we can do it. Yeah, and anyone, Catherine, you want to make any changes in that?
If anybody wants to provide any sort of critiques, comments to the, the red line version, which is the September sixteenth version, I, I certainly will take them at advice. Again, we have until next Tuesday to get it into the mini-track and Granite Coast for purposes of moving forward. And certainly, any comments that you have as far as what's been circulated, I would take into consideration if anybody out there in the public has some comments on things that they think might be able to be included. I welcome that as well.
And I always think, I always think it's a good idea to discuss it at work session and bring in who we think are some of the, well, bring in some of the stakeholders and give them an opportunity.
So I think, Bobby, you just got to change that January one twenty date.
Well, there's a town board meeting and of course, they can discuss it at any, any time. The public is always welcome to have input and so the next town board meeting, they're more than welcome to come in and chime in. And they can call us, email us, text us, right to the clock. That's our open process and we're going to continue that. And thank you, Bob, again.
And I have a couple of questions before we move on, I know we're at the end of the agenda. I'm wondering if the public, if we could have an update on the cameras?
Yes.
Security cameras?
Why didn't you, that was easily made by a phone call. Catherine, it's, from what I understand, as of last week, they were working with a tree that it was being viewed, but they were hooked up. And very easily, you could call Dan McCormick, who's our attorney, and you have more than, and, and you have more than enough time, you could call him and he'll give you. But I understand that they were functional, they were just trying to adjust, take off some branches off a tree that was impeding it. And so if you want that, that's really easily, give him a call or I'll give him a call and let you know. So we'll move forward from that, anything else?
A couple of other questions and Devin, maybe you could bring Frank back in since we're, is Frank back? We bring Frank back in because he's, we're not talking about the solar anymore. I'm wondering where we are with the RFQ submissions for the railroad TOD project?
Catherine, bring those questions up, it's not on agenda.
It's not on your agenda, you have to bring in Don Thomas. Yeah, right, I mean, you have to bring in Don Thomas and that should really be on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on agenda and, you know, some of these questions are going to be solved.
I'm asking you, I was asking you where we are with that.
I know, it seems like it's an attack of questions and we're here for a work session to discuss the items. And all these questions can be done by a phone call. I'm a little confused, but-
Is it Don?
Um, okay.
Also, what I wanted to give Frank, I have a question for you, Frank, but I want to give you a, a chance to sit down. Frank, I was just wondering, as we go through the budget process and such, and we have these, I know, sorry, I know you are the liaison to water. And we have these water forums coming up, we have one in September. So I'm wondering if we have the budget or the number cost for the projects in Calverton and Manorville?
Well, I can answer that, the budget-
The industrial projects?
The, the ones where the, where the concern's about contamination. If we have the overall cost for what that would be as we move forward with the forums, I was thinking that those are important, those are important things to know. So you said you have the answer to that?
I don't have the answer, I'm not even sure what properties or projects you're talking about. HK Ventures is one of them or not?
No, I'm talking about the people in Manorville, the people whose homes and, and there are some homes also in Calverton.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I know-
The price was nine million dollars, I believe.
It was nine point three, I think.
Yeah, you, you signed off on the resolution, Catherine.
And that's for, well, I didn't know if we had updated numbers on that and that is-
No, there is no update, they did, they were, they did what it cost, that's a map and plan.
That's a map and-
And that's what it's going to cost.
And those were my questions today.
Okay, so we're going to, okay, we had three items on the agenda, we're done with them, we're correct?
Wonderful.
Okay, so that's good. Again, thank you, everyone, I, hopefully, we'll see you this weekend at the drag racing. This concludes our discussion items for today. In a moment, I'm going to ask you to give me a first and a second to go into executive session to discuss the following matters. On personnel, we have one matter, matter surrounding hiring of two employees and litigation, matter surrounding litigation entitled Phoenix Homes LLC versus Town at Riverhead. And the thirtieth matter surrounding retention of outside counsel. And can I have a first and a second to go into executive session, please?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move, thank you, everyone, and be safe.